Welcome. Thank you for being here and participating in your county government process. At this time, I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session for November the 14th, 2023 to order. And glad to have Sheriff Gullidge with us this morning. Looking for other elected officials. All right. So Brian, if you'll bring the list forward. If you've got your phone on, be a good time to silence it. Thank you, sir. We are very pleased to have Chief Deputy Chad Hunting with us this morning and a veteran to bring us our invocation and help us with the pledge of the flag there. Chad, if you want to come forward, we're so glad to have you with us and for your willingness to do this.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this morning, dear God. We thank you for this day, dear Lord. And Lord, we just, we ask for your blessings upon this meeting, oh Lord. And God, I pray over our Board of Commissioners, dear God, that you would give them wisdom, give them courage, give them strength, dear Heavenly Father Lord, to make those tough decisions for our blessed county, dear Lord. Lord, we pray for all of our military that are abroad and all the evil that's going on in the world today, dear God. We know that you're in control, dear Heavenly Father Lord. But Lord, we ask you to look down upon us and just bestow that mercy and that grace that we know you for, dear Heavenly Father Lord. Please watch over all of our servicemen and women, dear God. And Lord, we pray for all of our first responders, dear God, especially here in Paulding, dear God, that you'd continue to hedge protection about them, dear Lord, as our world is ever changing, dear Heavenly Father Lord, and the dangers that they see every day, dear God, and the positions that they're put in, dear Lord. We pray for them and their families, dear Lord. Lord, again, I ask you to bless this meeting and that everything be done in your glory, dear Heavenly Father God. Lord, I pray for blessings upon our county and our state, dear Lord. And we thank you for all the goodness that you have provided for us, dear Lord. All these things we ask in Jesus' sweet and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
For the pledge, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Colonel Hunting for bringing that invocation and pledge for us. Meant a lot. The minutes, the October 24th, 2023 work session minutes and the October 24th board meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements and Team Paulding this month or this meeting, we have Employee of the Month Amy Shid with the Finance Department.
As soon as I come to work in finance, Amy just kind of stands out. She's the person who, when there's a problem, she's the first person to stand up and say, okay, what can I do to help out? Amy does grant. She works grant writing and grant administration for the county. So that's, she works with many of the departments. She secures funding and gets the resources that, so that tax dollars don't have to be spent. Yep, she's helped leverage a lot of extra funding that we would not have had if she was not here at the county. As a person, you don't get much better than Amy. She's humble. She's probably going to be upset that I have nominated her because she doesn't like a lot of recognition. But she's a good friend. She's a positive person. When you spend as much time as we do, or anybody does at a job, you spend more time than you do with your family. It's important to have those people around you that, you know, you feel like they have your back and are there and going to support you. And she is everybody's biggest cheerleader. And she's right there and, you know, with all of us each day. And I just want to let her know how much we appreciate her and how much she really means to me and means to the department and means to our team in finance because we really couldn't do it without her.
We didn't even bring Amy in here. She's just across the hall. Does a fantastic job helping me out this morning. We're very delighted to have Tim and Sarah with us this morning. And I'll let Manager Frank Baker tell us a little bit more about the Make-A-Wish this year. If you weren't there, you missed a good time. It's always a good time. Gets the day started off right. Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, today is a good day for us. We've got Tim and Sarah here. October the 7th last month, we had our sixth annual Rides for Wishes, and that's the bike ride on the Silver Comet Trail. It's not a race, it's just a ride up to 22 miles. You can do seven, or you can do 12, or you can do 2022 if you want. But with the help of our employees, our volunteers, our businesses, individual contributions and sponsorships, we want to make a check presentation today to Tim and George to Make-A-Wish. So we appreciate Tim being here and Sarah being here. And I want to have them come up. And we've got a little video that I'd like to get Jeff to roll for us. And then I'll give you the amount and tell you where we are over a six-year period.
The first event, Frank came to me and he had this idea to get something started up here in Paulding County for Paulding County kids. And just to come back every year and see it happen and see some people come back out and do the event again, get some new riders out here. It's just, it's great to see and it's done a lot to help Paulding County kids get their wishes.
Yeah.
We're right around 65,000 right now. And I think this year is going to push us close to 80,000. So that's a lot of wishes for kids right here in Paulding. I know we have 19 kids in Paulding County right now that are waiting for their wish. So that's going to go a long way and help make sure we get those grants. In Georgia, this is the only bike event that we have. So we've got lots of different events. You have a black tie event. We have a walk, a number of different things. But this one is really unique. And I think it kind of plays into what you have here in Paulding County and with the Silver Comet Trail and, you know, the community that comes out to put it on. So it's a lot of fun. Just thank everyone in Paulding County for the continued support of Make-A-Wish Georgia. It's a local organization helping local kids and couldn't do it without you.
So this year, well, the check will be for $11,537. And in the six-year period, we're approaching that $8,000 mark. So we're really pleased with that. So without further ado, I'll let Tim come up and then we'll do a picture with you guys and have the big check. The smaller check is the one with the actual dollars on it. But we've got a big check this morning. So, Tim?
Thank you Frank. Thank you Commissioners. Every morning or every year, I look forward to coming up to Paulding County for Rides for Wishes. I enjoy the drive up. I enjoy spending time there, usually with my son and getting to see all of you. We get to see so many folks from the community. We get to see local businesses. You see the chairman out there with his grandkids every year. And it really does a lot. And then equally, every year, I look forward to coming here on this day and telling you guys about the impact that you've had. And it's significant. As you saw in the video, you've raised a lot of money over a fairly short time that all goes for granting wishes for Paulding kids. In the video, I'd mentioned we had 19 kids that were waiting. That number's currently up to 20. But we already have five that are scheduled to be granted in the next few weeks. So we're already on pace to grant more wishes for these kids than we did last year. And that's all thanks to you. So again, thank you from the bottom of my heart on behalf of our board, our chapter, and all the wish kids and families out there. Thank you.
Tim, if you don't mind me asking, what have been some of the wishes fulfilled?
We've had a couple of Disney wishes are the ones that we currently have on the schedule right now. So Disney's the most popular wish that we still have. And I always tell people, you know, it's very different when you do Disney as a Make-A-Wish family. I have four kids, but I can't take my kids to Disney and do Disney the way Make-A-Wish does Disney. So it's a very special time and experience for those kids.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
May I have a few more granted? morning. Under bid awards award the Burnt Hickory Road at Stout Parkway and Brownsville Extension Roundabout Project to the lowest responsive bidder, ER Snell Contractors Incorporated, in the amount of $2,172,580.54. The funds for the project will be allocated from GDOT reimbursement of $1,465,017.53 and Paulding and Cobb County sharing the additional cost. The Paulding portion will be allocated from SPOST funds in the amount of $353,781.51. This project's located on the Cobb County-Paulding County line with the Paulding portion located in Post 3. And Mr. George Jones to enlighten us a little bit more. George, thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. Like you said, Chairman, this intersection's located in the southeast portion of the county, Post 3. Roughly half the intersections in Cobb, half the intersection in Paulding. Burnt Hickory Road is the dividing line, essentially the center line of the project. This intersection compared to similar functional class roads had a higher coincidence or incidence of right angle crashes. From a traffic engineering study, the best long-term solution for the intersection was determined to be a single lane roundabout. As an interim measure, the county installed a always stop control to help control the crashes, which it has done to help with that, reducing that rate. GDOT applied or invited the county to apply funding towards the construction of a safety project. We submitted this intersection to GDOT for consideration and they subsequently approved adding this project for funding. The funding provided through GDOT is federal and the county subsequently went through the preliminary engineering, right-of-way and utilities coordination for this project. At that point, the Finance Department advertised the construction of the single lane roundabout project. Two bidders submitted bids for this project. The lowest responsive bid was ER Snell in the amount of $2,172,580.54. As you'd stated, the federal grant will contribute $1,465,000, $1,465,017.53 towards the cost. Paulding County and Cobb County will split the remainder of the cost, which is $353,781.51 each. GDOT has reviewed and concurred on the bid award. The county portion of this will be constructed, will be funded through SPOST. We cannot start work until GDOT issues a notice to proceed. So at this point, we're just requesting the board approve to go ahead with awarding this project to ER Snell. And we will try to get the NTP approved through GDOT as quick as possible. And I'd like to thank our Engineering Division and Erica Parrish, Deputy Director, for working very hard to get this through the finish line. There's a lot of steps, a lot of processes to get these projects, especially with federal funding approved, and they did a great job.
Any questions for George this morning? It's going to be a great project.
It will. Very excited.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Rebecca, if you'll give me permission, I'll just read three, four, and five, the next three, which are the Tabitha Pollard Show here. I'll read them all. All right. Three is award the purchase of a 2024 Freightliner chipper truck to Peach State Truck Centers in the amount of $129,719. This purchase will be funded through general funds and approved and was approved in the 2024 budget. And similarly, item four is to award the purchase of a 2024 Freightliner 15-foot flatbed dump truck to Peach State Truck Center in the amount of $127,586. Purchase was funded through the general funds and approved also in the 2024 budget. And number five is to award the purchase of two 2024 Freightliner tandem dump trucks to Peach State Truck Centers in the amount of $170,356 each. This purchase will be funded through general funds and also approved, was also approved in the 2024 budget. So all these things are bid awards this morning. And Ms. Pollard, to answer any questions.
Good morning. This is an expensive purchase, but very simple. It's already been vetted one time because it was in the 2024 budget. All three of these items are being, or four of these items are being purchased off of the state contract pricing. So they were, the prices were bid out among the state and we piggyback off of that pricing. Each one of them are, well, number three is a replacement vehicle for a 95. Number four is a replacement vehicle for a 2004. And number five is, one of them is a replacement vehicle for a 91 and one of them is for stormwater. So we have used these vehicles for a while. Unless you have any questions.
Guess we're good. Thank you. Item six is to award the Playground of Dreams Bathroom Remodel Project to the low bidder Hugh McMartin in the amount of $16,500. Funding for this project will be through SPOST funds. And Mr. Jeremiah Fields to report.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning. This bathroom is in dire need of a remodel. There's holes in the walls and it looks bad for the county. So it really needs a lot of work. We can get it done in about eight weeks. There was three bidders on this project and he was the lowest bidder. He is doing work currently for the county right now at Station 9, Fire Station 9.
Bathroom remodel, Sarah Bann?
Yes, sir. At the playground. Yes, sir.
I could see why. It needs it. Hopefully, this is one of many. We can get done.
Can you say again the finish date?
About eight weeks.
About eight weeks?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thanks, Jeremiah.
Yes, sir.
Item seven is to award the Employee Benefits Plan Brokerage and Consulting Services Agreement to NFP. Tara Palmer?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This board made a commitment a couple of years ago that every three to five years that we would revisit this. And this is why we're here today. We've met that mark beforehand. It had not been looked at for several years. With the help of the Finance Department, we put out a bid in August. Six proposals were received. We put together a committee. They reviewed those proposals based on the criteria that was put in the request. Interviews were conducted. The committee did interviews and we decided to select NFP. During this process, we were able to reduce the commission rate. I got more paid services and we're going to get better products and better platforms. And those savings will be effective December the 1st.
Glad to have Parnik with us this morning. He helps in laying the framework and groundwork.
Absolutely. Sure does.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Tara.
Thank you.
We don't have any reports this morning from the committees or our departments. Public participation on agenda items, no one has signed up. Consent agenda, consideration of several items here. Item eight is to authorize the chairman to enter into a project framework agreement, PFA, with the Georgia Department of Transportation detailing the preliminary engineering commitments for PI 0019801, the Dallas-Aquethor Highway from Mount Tabor Church Road to State Route 92, the widening project. Federal funding secured with the Atlanta Regional Commission in the amount of $875,000. It'll be utilized for this project. And this project is located in Post 1 and Post 4. And if we have questions later, Mr. Jones is responsible for that one. Item nine is to conform the 2024 Paulding County Board of Commissioners designated, I said conform, let me read that over, confirm the 2024 Paulding County Board of Commissioners designated holiday schedule. That's one for Ms. Palmer. Item 10 is to approve the Paulding County Board of Commissioners 2024 regular meeting schedule. That's Rebecca Meredith, our county clerk. 11 is to approve a new job classification and description for an executive assistant for the sheriff's office, Ms. Palmer's. And number 12 is to adopt job classification for a construction division manager for the Paulding Water Systems, also Ms. Palmer. And number 13 is to appoint Peggy Osterhout as the Democratic representative to serve on the Board of Elections with a term through June 30th, 2027. Item 14 is to accept the following streets for perpetual maintenance by the county. Those are listed on your agenda. I'm not going to read those out, but you can see those along with item 15, which is declare the following items listed as surplus and to approve their disposal through auction or trade. So the items are also listed on your agenda that you have received this morning. So would anyone like to move any of these consent agenda items to regular business? Hearing no requests for that, we will leave them in the consent agenda for this afternoon's voting. We have no old business this morning. Under new business, item 16 is discuss action to adopt the county administration's job classification for Community Relations Coordinator. And Frank Baker is going to explain that to us a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a position that we've been talking about for some time now, for actually for a couple of years. And I asked Tara to come to the podium, asked her if she could be here to walk us through this also. But I just want to kind of give a general overview of why it's needed. We have a tremendous number of employees now, both part-time and full-time. I think it's inching up to around 1,500. And so our departments have a lot of things going on. There's a lot of programming that we do. And there's a lot of special events and coordination that we do. And a lot of times, it will bleed over into several departments, working on the same kind of event. And we really need somebody to come in and help us with managing those kinds of things and also developing relationships with and engagement with our community, our community partners, the businesses and other things that are out there, groups running and helping with town hall meetings, getting the messaging out. And as everybody knows, if you don't have a smartphone now, you're just about lost. So everybody's relying on social media platforms to get messaging out. So we really need to get a lot more messaging out than we have been doing to keep our citizens more informed about what's going on with county government and what's going on with our programming that we're doing. So we really, really need to have somebody that can coordinate all those things for us. And they would be serving with me as the county manager. It would be serving out of my office and working heavily with Jeff Harkins and his crew to get, he or she, to get that message out. You have anything else that you'd like to add to it?
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. New business item 17 is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a professional service agreement with Heath &amp; Lineback Engineers Incorporated for continuing supportive engineering services not to exceed $500,000 for a 14-month period. This agreement will be funded with our general funds. George Jones has more information.
Thank you. As you all know, we've been utilizing Heath &amp; Lineback for professional services with our staff, staffing shortages over the last year and a half or so. The Engineering Division, we're missing one senior pre-construction engineer. We have another one that's on military leave and is on military leave until October, November 2024, which would be a total of three years. He'll be missing by that point. And also, we've been without a Engineering Division manager since October of last year. We're asking the board to approve a contract with Heath &amp; Lineback Engineers so they can provide senior engineers and also engineers to help us continue our work efforts. Obviously, large county as we have, the amount of projects that we have, we need staffing to accommodate that work. You know, we're hopeful of getting qualified employees, personnel apply for our jobs. Until then, we're requesting the board approve this contract with Heath &amp; Lineback. It'll be on a per hour basis. So if you use the hours, you'll be billed for them. If you don't use them, you won't be billed for it. It is not a lump sum contract. So requesting the board to consider going forward with this contract for Heath &amp; Snell to continue our engineering services.
Any questions for George? The next one's yours also. So let's move on to 18, which is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement with Trans Systems Incorporated in the amount of $105,000 for completion of engineering plans for the Pine Shadows Drive at Lake Jane roadway and drainage project. Project's located in Post 2 and will be funded with general funds.
Pine Shadows Drive, like you said, Chairman, is located in Post 2. Lake Jane abuts Pine Shadows Drive on the north side of Pine Shadows, roughly in the 1,100 block of Pine Shadows Drive. North side is Lake Jane. On the south side is a smaller lower lake. The principal spillway for Lake Jane at this location consists of a metal outlet pipe and a stand pipe that is roughly 50 years old. The outlet pipe goes from the bottom of the stand pipe and then under the road and dam and outlets onto the lower lake. The stand pipe is to maintain the water level at the top of the pipe and provide outlet control of water. The existing stand pipe system has evidence of corrosion, sloughing on the slope, evidence of bank erosion, and also voids under the center of the dam. Obviously, we're interested in stabilizing the road and dam and the banks against water and wave action. We solicited a scope of work from Trans Systems to provide engineering plans towards the construction of a new drainage outlet system in this location. Their project includes environmental documentation permits, final plans, utility relocations, and right-of-way plans, essentially asking the board to approve entering into a contract with Trans Systems in the amount of $105,000 for the completion of the engineering plans for this project. If approved, the funding will be utilized from general funds.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Item 19 is discuss action to approve the funding in the amount of 1.6 million to the Paulding County Airport Authority for construction of tee hangars. The project will be funded with general funds. We've got Scott Green, Mr. Green, and Mr. Terry Tibbetts with us this morning to tag team or whatever you want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is for construction of two hangar buildings. Each hangar will house 10 aircraft, for a total of 20 aircraft in the two buildings. The Airport Authority has a state contract price to build these facilities, and they have already received deposits to rent all the spaces. In the back information provided to you, we stated that the project will pay for itself in 16 years or less. It should actually be much better than this because rent on hangars will be adjusted annually according to the Consumer Price Index. If a 3% escalation is used for the rent collection, then the payback is actually reached at under 11 years on this project. The Airport Director, Terry Tibbetts, is managing this project for the Airport Authority and can answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Mr. Tibbetts, love to hear any amplifying information.
I think Scott did a good job. Thank you, Scott.
Any questions for Scott or Terry this morning?
I know there's a huge demand for tee hangars in this area, I mean, in Atlanta, metro Atlanta area. So for the ones that have put a deposit down, I imagine they're really happy that we're moving forward.
They're very excited, yes.
Have you seen any activity to, for new ones to be replacing the ones that might be coming off the tarmac or wherever they might be moving into?
I think we've added three or four. I think we've added three or four additional names to our waitlist just in the past 10 days. So yeah, that list continues to grow. We're back over 100 on the waitlist now.
Yeah, because I know folks have planes out there, and I've been listening to them for the last few years and the need for that. So I know it should be a great project moving forward.
I wanted to ask, the payback time, does that include the new planes coming in, the avalorum that we'll get from them, or is that just on?
No, it does not. The avalorum tax is on top of that. And one of the first planes that we had sign up is a brand-new Cirrus, million-dollar airplane that's going to be going into the hangar. So these are the class of airplanes that we hope to attract, and these are airplanes that are currently paying tax in other counties, and we want to see that tax shifted to Paulding.
Me, too.
Yeah.
Any idea of a completion date now that we're?
Well, the kit takes about six months. The steel for the beams and the trusses and so forth, it takes about six months to manufacture. So it'll be sometime in the summer.
Other questions, comments? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Not soon enough, Terry.
Item 20 is discuss action to approve the indemnification and release agreement between Paulding County, Arcadis U.S. Incorporated, and Piedmont Geotechnical Consultants Incorporated, arising from the construction of the Richland Creek Reservoir whereby Paulding County will receive $3,500,000 in settlement of disputed claims. And our county attorney, Jason Phillips, is going to enlighten us some more on that one.
Commissioners, about three weeks ago, myself along with Larry Slavinsky, an attorney with King &amp; Spaulding, both of us representing Paulding County, we had about a 10-hour mediation regarding indemnification claims stemming from the construction of the Richland Creek Reservoir. We were mediating with Arcadis. It's our project engineer for the project and one of their subcontractors, Piedmont Geotechnical Consultants. And I am happy to report that after 10 hours of being downtown, we, subject to your approval, Paulding County should be receiving about $3.5 million back as an indemnification agreement, subject to your approval here. Contrary to the other things on the agenda, at least most of them, this would be money coming back to the county as opposed to your approval for money going out of the county. Happy to answer any questions you all may have.
You have any champagne?
I do not, but I think that, well, $3.5 million may cover a bottle or two, but that might be an inappropriate expenditure, but nonetheless.
So this money goes to the county general fund? Is that where the money goes, or does it go to the water department? How does that work?
It comes to the county and where Ms. Pollard magically places it. I don't have the answer to that one.
Any other comments? Thank you, Jason. Wrapping up new business with item 21 is discuss action to approve a budget funding allotment increase in the amount of $600,000 for the completion of the Dallas-Aquithrough Highway slash Frye Road slash Mount Tabor Church Road intersection improvement project. This allotment request will be allocated from SPOLOST, Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Funds, and it's located in Post One and Post Four. Again, Mr. Jones.
The intersection project for Dallas-Aquithrough-Frye-Mount Tabor was awarded by the BOC originally in October of 2020 to Barto paving the amount of $2,951,575.76. Funding for the project was allocated from SPOLOST and is in Post One and Post Four. The notice proceed for the project was issued in January 2021. The overall project completion date was identified as 18 months and/or by July 5, 2022. In May 21, it was determined that an area of easement was required to accommodate the project staging. After unsuccessfully trying to negotiate with the property owner for the needed area, Paulding DOT requested Barto paving provide a redesign for the county's review and approval for the project. A plan was submitted to the county for review and consideration, which is approved in November of 2021. The redesign changed the contractor's work plan and proposed utility relocation from a concurrent to a sequential operation. Due to the delays of the redesign and the time, the contract date has expired. The contract pricing associated with the contract has expired, and the unit rates have increased, and the subcontractor contracts need to be renewed. The contract specifications for this project state the department will be liable for delay damages caused by arising from acts or omissions on the part of the department which violate legal or contractual duties owed to the contractor by the department. Delays arising are caused from right-of-way issues. Defects in plans are commonly experienced with roadway construction projects. These delays may constitute a basis for claim for delay damages if found to be in accordance with the contract specifications, which this one was found to be. Barto paving filed a claim for an allotment increase for the project. We've agreed at this point on unit costs for contract items and quantities that have not yet been placed, starting with the upcoming pay period. These updated unit costs are consistent with the contract language and project specifications. The estimated cost for the contract quantities is $405,000, and that's based on the quantities not yet placed, likely be a little bit higher or a little bit lower, but that's what the estimate is. In addition, we found a sewer force main for the project was found to be in conflict with the design plans. A redesign is currently taking place, and the as-construted main will have to be extended and moved to the opposite side of the road for a portion of distance. So the estimated relocation and design with the bores, casings, and other appearances is going to cost roughly $195,000-$200,000. So essentially asking the board to approve a contract allotment increase in the amount of $600,000 towards the completion of this project, which is 21% more than the original contract amount.
George, could you please read that again?
I was hoping you were.
Do you have any idea, George, on amended completion date?
We're looking at March of '21, or March of '24, however. Right now, with the sewer line design and construction, that's going to basically determine whether we can meet that or not. So until we get that worked out, that's going to be the next domino, but I'll be sure to let you all know when we get that.
I would kill him if he knew that day.
I am sorry, yes, it's.
George, I wanted to ask, you said that this is fairly common in road construction?
It does happen, yes.
This kind of issue?
Yeah.
We have a really great GIS department here. If we had all of our sewer mains and things like that included in that GIS, wouldn't that kind of help in this sort of situation so that we could see all the layers under the road and what was where before we start digging?
Yeah, that would definitely help. In this case, essentially, it was a consultant engineer had designed the line, however they designed it, based on the center line of the road, not actually where it was going on the shoulder of the road. And there was a difference in elevation of the center line was up here, and then in the shoulder, by the time you get off the road itself, it was down here. So you would have had a sewer main in the air, which is obviously not something you want to have, a line that's under pressure. But yes, that would definitely help to be able to accurately have all your utilities and other county-owned features basically located correctly and elevation and, you know, X, Y coordinates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
That's the conclusion of regular business. No one signed up to speak on non-agenda items. Would any of the commissioners like to make any announcements or comments whatsoever? Well, while you're thinking, I'd like to ask county manager Frank Baker to tell us a little bit about Hearts for Heroes, and he might throw in the tree planting effort.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Saturday, last Saturday was Veterans Day, and so there were several events. The event that you see on the screen is an event that was driven by Senator Jason Anavatardi, one of our state senators here in Paulding. And he had come up with a great project, and that was to have tree plantings in honor of veterans. And so Commissioner Dunn and myself and Cooper in his office have been working for several months now to try to get that project off the ground, and so that happened on Saturday. And I know, Chairman, you spoke at it, and Commissioner Dunn, you also spoke. And the location of this first go-around with the trees is up in Seven Hills. The community up there, Artisan, donated some land for this project, and so the very first tree plantings were up there. And it looks great. It's still progress in work, but it really, really looks good, and we were honored to be able to be a part of that going on. So I want to send a thanks to Corey Nybert of Artisan who worked with us on the project. It was a really, it was a really good day. We had a lot of veterans there. They stepped up to the plate. Their HOA has a lot of veterans, and so they did a companion Veteran Appreciation Day in conjunction with this grand opening of this event. But what the senator wants to do is to have other projects throughout the county to plant trees for veterans in other places, not only to say thanks to the veterans, but also to replace green trees to our environment where we've had development, we've had roads come in. So it's a dual-fold project, and we were just, again, really delighted to be a part of that. And Commissioner Dunn, you might want to say a few things. I know you and I worked on it for quite some time with him, and it was a pleasure to do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just been a fun project to deal with. I appreciate all the county's help on it. You know, we tried, we looked for some of the public lands to put it in, as far as parks or some DOT property or something. We were just weren't successful. And then, of course, Frank had the idea of reaching out to Artisan, and those guys, they bent over backwards to accommodate us and help us. So the end result, we basically got free land to put trees, and those guys stepped up and paid for the construction of the sidewalks. They installed the trees. They helped with the design. So it was a plus-plus for everybody. I know Tabitha likes it when we spend somebody else's money, so it was just a great event. And it's, too, for me, it was kind of a learning experience. You know, you never know what you can get unless you ask. You know, those developers stepped up, and they were more than willing to designate this area in their development for a cool public space. So it was an awesome thing all around. So I appreciate your work on it, too, Frank.
Well, thank you. And it's on Seven Hills Boulevard, right off Seven Hills Boulevard, open to the public. And the other event that we had that day was we had a veterans event here in Hearts for Heroes in the afternoon, which was led by the Chamber. A real successful event at 11 o'clock, was led by the American Legion Post 111. And actually, I wanted to mention them and then throw them a shout-out, too, because they actually stepped up on Senator Anavatardi's project, too. And so you saw in the pictures, you saw a couple of the folks from 111 there, and so they got involved as a partnership with Senator Anavatardi. So thank you for their help, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for helping us navigate them to get involved with that. So it was a good day. It really was a good day for us.
And you also put a lot of work in coordination with the Chamber, which is the way to do things, so good job. Anybody else? I'd like to welcome Teresa Lyons that came in from the school board, and also Ivy Capps with Child Advocacy Center. Thank you all for being here. Any other comments from the board here? If none, executive session is next, and I need to get a motion to go into executive session for potential litigation in real estate.
Motion to go into executive session for potential real estate and litigation.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Galloway. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will come back into this room following our executive session, but it's probably going to be a while. But we will adjourn from here whenever we get finished. Thank you all again for being here, and we stand adjourned. All right, we have met in executive session and adjourned from executive session to return to regular session, and we do have one motion to hear.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda one new business item, specifically the approval of the commercial purchase and sale agreement with Oasis Family Church Incorporated for the purchase of the Oasis Family Church property located at 210 Paulding Lane, Paulding County Tax Parcel 138.4.2.025.000, consisting of approximately 7.6 acres for the price of $5.2 million, and to authorize the chairman to execute all documents related thereto.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Stover. And is there any discussion?
I would just like to say thank you to Keith and Brian. They worked really hard on this project, and I can't wait to see what we're going to do with it.
Amen. All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Carrie's 5-0, and I will make a motion to adjourn from.
Chairman, did you want county manager? Do you want county manager to brief anybody on this?
I do. I thought in my mind we were going to do that at 2:00. But I'm not in any hurry, you know. Well, I am in a hurry, but y'all want to hear about it at 2:00, or?
That's good.
Okay. So we'll take care of it at 2:00 and be ready for that, county manager. And I think I already made, somebody, I made the motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stover. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Carrie's 5-0, we stand adjourned.